Okay, we're going to call to order the, I can't think, we're running so late here. We were waiting to see if Commissioner Matheson, Massey would come, they're running late. But we want to call to order the regular meeting of the Carabelle City Commission. It's Thursday, April the 7th at 6:05 PM. And I'd like Commissioner Allen to set an indication and it will be pledged to the flag, thank you.
Godfather and Heaven, we're so grateful that we had the opportunity to come together as citizens of this wonderful city that you've provided for us. We ask you to be with us tonight in our deliberations and our judgments that might give us all wisdom and decor that will not come to the best decisions for this lovely city in harmony with your will. We especially pray for our country, Father, as it's undergoing stress and turmoil as rest of the rest of the world. We hope that your hand and we trust your hand will be guiding all affairs of men. And we ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible) to the life of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's like the Walmart setting up.
Okay, someone like to entertain motion to approve the minutes for February 4th and March 10th?
I know the motion is perfect.
Okay, so we have motion by Commissioner Walden, a second by Commissioner Allen, and that's probably the way it will be vice versa through the night since we are missing two commissioners. And, all in favor?
Aye.
Any disapprove? Okay, then the motion carries. Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to public comment. I think we have a few people here who want to participate in public comment, so someone please come forward, Mr. Steve Allen, with circuit, we're contesting. And use your microphone and turn it on and state your name.
Hello. My name is Steve Allen, and Mayor last month you asked me to bring one of my lovely assistant fishy fashion models, Joan, to the world.
(Inaudible).
She's beautiful.
Ms. Joan, turn on the video.
Bark it. And Joan, would you like to say a little bit about your particular costume and name of it?
Well, I hope it won't be misunderstood, but we do refer to this as the Sea Vamp, and we do use this as an opportunity to plug sponsorship of any restaurant sponsors because it's an expandable dress and it will, you know, expand right along with you if you eat too many, you know, group of fingers down at Fathom's or, so, all the outfits are geared to help to, you know, give attention to the city, or sponsor to the festival, or something about the festival and the whole maritime nature of our area.
Thank you, Joe. Real quick, I know that we want to move along since we're running a little late. This is the festival, you'll see more of these around town. Yes, yes, hold it, assistant. So this year, we're celebrating the 26th Annual Festival. It's on April the 22nd, Friday night, from 4:00 to 8:00, and April the 23rd, from 10:00 till 6:00. We will have arts and crafts and food, like we generally do, and participation from many other organizations in the community. This year, parts of the Carabellean is playing a role in some of the events, but we are focusing especially this year on the legend of Tate's Hell. That legend we're all familiar with, some of those of you who've been here a long time are familiar with, the stories that were told year after year in generations. In our research, we started off discovering a longer version of the tale that came from oral accounts in Appalachia Cola about five years back. This tale included a kind of a forest story about Tate and Sumatra and Indian and a curse and a whole saga, and so we want to present that. And then we'll have, Tom Mason is writing a new song that will talk about that account. And just last night, in some additional research, I discovered that 32 years ago, there was a premiere of a movie for the legend of Tate's Hell that was produced through the Florida Arts Council and National Endowment. And it is a 56-minute docudrama that includes stories being told by Leo Hans and Matur and others, and they talk about their accounts of the story, and this movie was highly produced and edited and has all of the elements that include, many of the elements are in this older version. We think this is a real opportunity, we are uniquely situated in Carabelle to be connected to this story, so we think it's a valid enterprise and look forward to what we discover now and in the months, in the months to come in order to present this. Are there any questions?
The movie premiered, the movie premiered at the Florida Seafood Festival in 1983, and the Franklin Chronicle used to give out free copies of the film if you subscribe.
So it's very interesting, we're very excited. Turns out that I discovered this at midnight last night, and I was up till 3:00 thinking and reading about all the details. I called my best friend here, the lovely Joan, and discovered that she was best friends with the actor who played Sebby Tate in the movie, so.
I never knew.
She's known him for years, from her youth in Calahasi, in our community up there, and so we've reached out to him and are hoping to get a copy of this movie.
Has anyone here ever seen that movie?
Apparently, there is a lack of local knowledge of this film even existing, and it's a tremendous opportunity to have something like that to show people coming into town and to talk about our resources and our neighboring community and connection to Carabelle, so, yes.
Show this as a movie, where would you show it?
On the street, I think, right now.
Outdoors, we can find.
Unless we can find another place. I mean, this is 24 hours old, this movie, I mean, there is no one that appears to have any knowledge of it, and so we want to review it first, and then if it's available and we can find a spot to show it, we'll show it as many times and as often as we can. And I think that the idea would be that this is a start of a bigger community project to focus on this incredible resource and cultural resource.
And the event of weather, have we considered our kitchen back there that has a nice stage and used to show things?
Well, we could certainly do that at some other times and during the festival, but if there's a weather event, I'm leaving town. Just kidding!
Where's town, I do check here the weather.
Okay, well, I did a good job last year, we had a lot of storms throughout the southeast and it was clear. Any other questions?
What would make movies?
I'm not sure exactly, but it is, first of all, the Franklin Chronicle did a series at the 100-year anniversary of Carabelle, and that's how I discovered this, as in that edition in April, they were speaking of it and there's great images and stuff, so I will be sending this link out and open look at this. But it's basically the tale of Sebby in the forest, and so I don't know the name of it, but I do know the name of the actors and the producers and the music scoreperson and the technical experts that helped do it. There's a whole article about the making of the movie and also interviews about the tale itself, so it's very fascinating.
Okay, we thank you very much, Mr. Steve Allen and Ms. Joan Mayday for the presentation.
Bobby and Dan Collins from Progress Energy may show up with a couple of big checks.
He's here.
Oh, I didn't see you.
Does he want to present those names?
Yes, he would love to.
Okay.
So I really. I really failed to mention that the festival is, happens due to a lot of generous support from our business community and Inovia, who has been supporting at the full sponsorship level for as long as I've been a part of the festival, and we really appreciate that. Centennial Bank, Weems has done it, others have done it, Progress Energy has, Duke Energy, Duke Energy, oops, Duke Energy supports the stage and the event of the stage, they sponsor that, and Duke also has supported other events in the community including the Lantern Festival. And so tonight, we would like to, first of all, appreciate Duke Energy and have a picture taken that shows to check, to giant checks.
We've got some.
And I think we have a fishy fashion model up here, Joan.
(Inaudible).
Yes. Mayor, would you mind?
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Okay. See, how much are they, $1,000 each? Oh, thank you, sir, thank you very much. Okay.
You got that right.
Okay, we'll move on, is there any other public comment? Thank you, sir, for coming and making that presentation.
Thank you so much for having me.
Okay, we have Mr. Tony Minicello, and then.
(Inaudible).
Alita, thank you.
I think most of you know me, I'm Tony Minicello, president of the Camp Gordon Johnson Association. We just finished up our 21st Camp Gordon Johnson Days, and it was, it was a really big success as compared to what we had in the past. We had a lot more vendors, we had a lot, a much larger parade. We wanted to express our deep appreciation to the city of Carabelle for your support, and we have a plaque here that we want to present.
Okay, well, thank you, I'll take that.
Partnering with us.
Okay, we appreciate it, we really do, we're very proud, thank you. The city of Carabelle is proud to support the Camp Gordon Johnston World War II Museum and the Camp Gordon Johnston Days reunion.
I think I want a picture.
Okay, and we're proud to support you on paying tribute and honoring the World War II veterans and all veterans and prisoners of war.
(Inaudible).
And active duty troops. Now, I hope that I'll come around.
I'll do karaoke in a minute.
Thanks. And I have something else I'd like to say.
Was I even looking at the camera?
I just want to say that Carabelle is very proud, I want to report to you that the Carabelle and its citizens over the past 10 years has demonstrated support for the Camp Gordon Johnston World War II Museum and just with contributions totaling just over $20,000 in the past 10 years. So we want you to know the city's on board. Okay, all right, thank you so much. You got to do the clap. Okay, I see, Ms. Alita Baker would like to come up and speak.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And microphone's on, so go ahead and state your name.
My name's Alita Baker, I'm a resident of Carabelle. I don't have one of the smartphones, but I have pictures of nine dogs that I was able to get pictures of roaming the streets of Carabelle. Some of them make their way to the IGA, we have tourists that go to the IGA, we have tourists that go to the Tilly Miller Park. People are taking their dogs to the park, letting them loose, letting them run, play with the children, they're not taking care of their dogs, they're at the bank, they are on Highway 67. We've had tourists that come in thinking that they want to move to Carabelle. Went down Lake House Road the other day, four dogs together on Lake House Road. The animal control people have been made aware of this, the county has been made aware of this. We have people from all over the world coming to Carabelle. I have lists of people that come from Australia, they come from everywhere to come to Carabelle. And we have these dogs that are just running wild, and it has gotten worse since I got bit on July 19th. It has gotten worse. People don't care, they even take their dogs to the IGA on the golf cart and leave them on the golf cart unattended, and sometimes they get off and go to the door and wait on their owner.
All right, Ms. Alita, do you have a suggestion for us? You know, right now, the county handles the animal control and the city does not have facilities for that or an animal control officer.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that. They only, from what I gather, they only work regular business hours. They told me that they did not have facility, enough facility for the animals. But if a dog bites somebody, they'll come and get it. If someone could get, let it known out there, you know, that there's going to be a warning, or if they could just pick up some of the dogs and have some of these people have to go pick up their dogs, pay a fine. A lot of the dogs don't have collars.
Did you know that the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is currently working on an animal control ordinance, and they're actually going to have a workshop here in Carabelle on April the 19th at 10 o'clock?
Okay, that sounds good, but they keep pushing it back and forth from city to county, county to city.
Well, the city, I know that the city of Carabelle does not have facilities to house animals.
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't believe that our officers have, you know, equipment in their car where they can, their vehicles where they can put animals in their, in their cars, you know.
They have, they have a truck that, it's, it locks them, you know, they can lock them up in the back.
Okay, does the police department have?
The police department, talking about animal control.
So, but we don't have animal control here in the city, the limit, the city of Carabelle does not have an animal control department.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that, but the main people that run Carabelle can do something with the commissioners.
We can call, we can attend that meeting and ask them that they would, you know, please release, give more coverage in Carabelle, and actually, I attended a county meeting about two weeks ago where they had a preliminary discussion, and Mr. Commissioner Noah Lockley suggested that they have someone rotate, that they begin rotating weekends, to cover, cover for weekends.
And in the afternoons, they're letting, the ones that, a lot of people that keep their dogs in the house during the day, they're letting them loose at night. And we have residents, longtime residents of Carabelle, I can name two, Mike Mock's mom is one that walks, Mr. Gander's wife, she walks, there's quite a few of the lifetime residents of Carabelle walk these streets, and I'm the only one so far that's gotten attacked and anything was actually done about, they did put the dog down, but that was it.
Does anyone have any suggestions?
I think what you said is about the best way to do it is look and go to the workshop.
The county, so they do. Have you been to the county, Mr. Peter?
I called about that.
Please, please come on the April the 19th, and it's going to be here in Carabelle, so that would be.
I called about that and was going to go to that one over there, and I was told that it wouldn't do any good because it was happening in Carabelle and you didn't address Carabelle.
Make it more convenient for you too, and you would make a good presentation for them.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Bring pictures if you have.
Oh, I have plenty of pictures.
I actually seen this lady out, she was attacked.
I did too.
I have plenty of pictures.
It was pretty bad.
Plenty of pictures.
Thank you for your comments, and we will certainly keep that in mind. Thank you so much. Okay, is there any more public comment? All right, then Commissioner reports, Commissioner Walden.
Yeah, I have one here from Chief Hunter, this is report for the month, he had 75 calls, dispatches, alarm calls six, animal calls one, arrests nine, felony one, investigators, other agency, break down search for eight times, Florida Hybris, plate control one time, E M S once, animal control again one, burglary call one, citizen assist three, civil complaints four, domestic calls five, disturbing calls five, fire calls three, follow-up investigations fourteen, problem one, unlocked vehicles three, death calls six, traffic stops 28, traffic citations issued six, traffic crashes six, and 36 security checks per month.
Well, thank you, sir.
I got it all out.
Thank you to the Carabelle Police Department. And Commissioner Allen, do you have a report for us?
I don't have anything specifically, no.
Okay.
I would like to thank the police department for the security checks because we get to a little car in our little business and it makes us feel very safe.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just want to report that the city and county road paving projects are complete, or they look like they're complete to me, I think Mr. Large has checked on it, and they even put sod, that was something that we ordered on the side there. And you can see the list of roads that have resurfaced in the city on my Facebook page. And then the Blue Star Memorial Highway Marker of Veterans Park has been restored by Mr. Tom Steeling, owner of Historical Markers Restorations. Back and forth, Greg Rosterson looked into removing the marker off its base so it could be repaired at a local shop, but it became apparent that restoring it in place would not be so cost-effective and it would run the risk of damage, damage to the marker by removing it. So Greg did research, he was able to locate the Historical Markers Restoration Company, and Mr. Stelings came over here from Daytona in his RV and stayed at one of the local RV parks, and he completed the restoration with the marker in place, so if y'all get a chance, stop by there, Veterans Park to see the, the new restoration, it's very nice. And then also right now, Veterans Park brick masons with Joan Stucko of Appalachia are currently in the process right now of replacing all new commemorative bricks on the wall, and it's looking really good. The Fourth Street Boat Ramp and Dock Improvement Project is complete and it's ready for use, so I know some folks who want to make sure that it was open and ready for brooper season. And the ramp has been resurfaced, the dock has been enlarged, and the parking lot's been improved, and there's a new sidewalk that's going from, down from Highway 98 down to the dock and then to an area where a future location of a Big Ben scene, Highway Kiosk is going to be placed. There's a few final cleanup touches that need to be done there, but we'll get that done in a few weeks. And I wanted to ask the city administrator to have signage placed there that indicates no overnight docking or 15-minute loading and unloading, and then I asked the clerk this afternoon if we have a city ordinance regarding overnight docking at city docks and fishing piers, and she, she found something that was older, so I'm going to take a look at that during the next month and, you know, see what it says and see what we can do. And then I just want to ask Courtney to thank you, go ahead and advertise for the surplus vehicles that we have, go ahead and advertise those for sale sometime in the next couple of weeks. And then there's a huge dump site that's developed on city property at the corner of Marine Street and Avenue C, and there's a lot of debris that's piling up there, and now fresh construction debris is on top of that, and, you know, yard debris is one thing, and I'm fearful that this dump site is going to become a habit, it's right on Marine Street, it's in our CRA district where we're trying to clean that up and move light, and we want to make sure too that it's cleaned up before the Riverfront Festival. And I just don't want that to become a habit, a dump site, a dump path, you know, it seems like once somebody dumps something somewhere, then it becomes a habit, and even people come from other areas of the county and begin dumping there, so, yes, sir.
I stopped by that dump site you talked about the other day, and there was some construction debris there, and I got in touch with a homeowner that lives near there and had them pick it up, they didn't want to put it there, and now there's some more there, it looks like I went by there yesterday. I'm not sure where that comes from, I explained to them they put yard debris, but not construction stuff.
Okay, thank you, thank you, chief. And I'm excited to report that during the last Tourist Development Council meeting, approval was given for what they call a fly-in getaway contest, and it's for a fly-in getaway contest for the Carabelle Airport. And this is, they're going to have this contest and be worked into their next budget here, and the prize includes two-night accommodations in a nearby hotel, two meals, two dinner meals, and tickets to a local attraction. So that's a good thing, the Tourist Development Council is beginning to promote our airports now, so we're excited about that, and that's all I have, and we'll move on then to Inovia's staff report.
You should have in your packet of information a status report from us on various projects, and I will generally let that speak for itself, but there is one item here that I wanted to go over with you briefly, and that is this Fifth Avenue Sinkhole Project. We had a geotechnical engineer do a test boring at this location, and it did indicate that the pavement depression is the result of karst activity, meaning sinkhole. There's basically two options to repair that. Typically, that's done with deep pressure grouting, where they actually pump grout into the sinkhole, and that could run upwards of $100,000. So it's very expensive, and that's just a guess, we don't know just how much concrete it would take. It is a deep feature, their boring's went to about 90 feet, it's very loose material, and that, that sinkhole, or that depression has formed over several years. So the second option is a continuous repair, and that would consist of about every maybe 10 to 15 years, saw cutting that area of pavement out and rebuilding that pavement section. We just understand you would have to do that every 10 to 15 years. That periodic cost would be somewhere in the $20,000 range, progressively increase. So it would be cheaper to fix it now versus have the continuous repair that the city would have to do over the next 50, 60, 100 years. The timing, there's actually a DOT program, it's called the Small County Outreach Program for municipalities, and we contacted Lorraine Moyle there, and she confirmed for us that a project to pressure grout here to fix this is, would be an eligible project under that program. Those applications are due in May, and if the city pleases, we would, we would make a, an application to DOT to repair the road under that program.
Well, we need to know first, is that, what is the match on that?
I'll find that out, I don't know the answer.
Okay, so that would make it hard, you know, we have, we have to have the money and have to be our log account, and you know I've already been, I was working on that already this week to see, you know, exactly the funding that we have that we can deal with there.
Right.
And so then you also mentioned in your report that possibly the Keos roadway drainage improvement.
Yes.
But I was unsure about which project, I didn't get a chance to ask you before the meeting, were you referring to the, you may not know offhand, the scope of the project that you engineered back in September of '14, and it was a large, a large amount, about $350,000, is that the project?
That's correct.
And if it's a 50, you know, we just can't tell you.
You can't read the 50, 50/50 match, understood.
And I was hoping that more was the other project that you did recently for northeast Seventh Street roadway improvements at 109, but, no, so that's not.
Well, and it would be something, I think, for the city to prioritize, what's the priority project for the city to apply for, and that grant is intended for one project.
One project.
Right.
So what he said, you all know the area we're talking about, Fifth Street.
Fifth Street Sinkhole.
And it's.
But that little creek or ditch, it's in another area, does that affect that at all anyway, does any water come into that?
No, not.
There's about 100 yards.
Right, from there, and there is a cross drain there, and that, I think that's really an independent feature from, from this karst feature, but it is a deep feature.
Do you have a picture of what's acting down there, is it a small hole, or is it a, is it general?
The geotechnical engineer would tell you that the only thing he's reporting is the, within the limit of his bore.
The core.
So.
The core.
Right.
And it went down about 90 feet, 90 feet.
Yes.
We don't have a drill through it anymore.
No, we don't, and the way sinkholes work is they fail from the bottom up, so the cavity is deep and then the failure occurs.
So we have no way to really truly bid the project. So we have no way to really truly bid the project? Because we don't know how much.
Quantity of concrete it would take.
Cement we would be pumping in there.
That's right. And this was an estimation. $100,000 was the estimation from the geotechnical engineer. And they perform that type work.
So you're really just going to have to take it up and look at it and see what you have there?
Well, not to 90 feet.
No, no.
Right. What we do is saw cut the depression out and then backfill it clean.
I think you're like Jackson, you know.
But now he did give a bid just, and did you see that? You got that, and I don't know. Did you see that to, a bid to repair it? And then it'd need to be, you're estimating about every 10 years that it would need repaired again?
Right.
What about the idea of maybe repairing it? And then hopefully within the next 10 years, we can get more technology and know more about it and have more money.
Or funds could be available to do the pressure grout, sure.
That's an idea. Now, you did, on your task order for this original job on Fifth Street, it included, the original task order included is developing engineering plans for mitigation.
That's correct.
So, and construction plan specifications permits design and ready for bidding.
Yes.
And then oversee the construction. So this price that you've given us here for $16,000 to do the repair, would there be any additional, unless there's a small work order change, any additional engineering charges?
Not for engineering.
Okay. What would you proceed?
Well, the $16,000, that was just our cost estimate for what it would take to repair it.
Okay.
Based on the extent of construction. But that's a construction number only. But in terms of engineering fees, you're right. All that was included in the task order.
Okay, that's already been taken care of. We've already approved that and about, if we haven't paid, we will.
Sure. Right.
Okay, so do we need to make a decision on this tonight? Or can we have Mr. Larges let us know about the 50% or this grant? Or do y'all think you want to pursue the grant for repair for the large repair? It could be $100,000 or more. And then we would have to match that?
To do the temporary match, the duct tape only, that would just be, you'd have to still go down and do a, it says here the, looking at the under surface, would have to be checked?
We would have to over excavate.
Clean out?
Yes, and then backfill with clean material and compact it. Right. Build the road section back.
I think I read.
That's my imagination.
Okay, somewhere did I read 18 inches or something like that?
That's right.
Okay. They excavate down 18 inches and then start over.
Right.
What do you think, Commissioner Walton?
What, I don't need that.
Okay.
What are we all about?
You get paid this high money, but you sit on that.
Uh, Ms. Courtney, do you have any input on this? Would you like to comment?
Well, if you don't mind me saying.
What's your recommendation?
Well, the present cost to do the temporary repair would be in the $16,000, maybe $20,000 range. And conceivably, that would last for 10 years. In that 10-year timeframe, grant funds could be pursued.
We could continue to pursue grant funds.
And that would give you a shot at seeing what's really under the ground surface.
That's right.
Under the surface. But I'll stick with that.
Right.
I think it'd be all right, just go ahead and do this repair as we're discussing.
Well, I'll move that then. Do the temporary repairs?
Yes, sir. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Allen to complete the temporary repairs that we just discussed here. Do we have a second?
Oh, sir.
Okay, so a second by Commissioner Walton? And all in favor? Aye. Any, so we're all in favor and a motion carried. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation and for giving the report to us this morning. Very good. Okay, Ms. Cameron, do you have a quick report for the street man?
Good evening, everybody. I've provided you all with a copy of our report. And we'll begin to get it in a lot sooner now, to be sure we get that covered. But I'm not going to go over everything on the report. But I am going to mention a couple of things. There were two things in particular that I wanted to bring up tonight. One is that we are just beginning to explore this. And Mr. Hartman and I have been passing phone tag trying to look at this more carefully. But I just wanted to tell you that we have identified some NOAA funding, which is through the Department of Environmental Protection, to do asbestos and lead remediation at the old water plant there in Tamara Allen Park. And on C Street, I couldn't think of C Street. And we, because the city owned the property during the time that the contamination happened, the city is not eligible to receive these funds, which don't have a match. They're just straightforward. They'll pay for it. But in order to be eligible for it, the title for that building of that property needs to temporarily be transferred to another entity. And in other communities, they've done that by transferring it to one community, to the Chamber of Commerce briefly, and then back to the city. And then another one, a nonprofit, and back to the city. So what I was going to talk to Mr. Hartman about is trying to gather some information on what, whether that funding would be, what it would cost. Because I would assume if you're selling and even selling it for $5 or a dollar, there would still be some cost in selling deeds back and forth. And so there might need to be some, just a legal look at that.
And then once this, once this, if you have this funding and the cleanup has been done, what is the obligation to NOAA? Does the building have to stay there? I mean, have we even decided that the building is going to stay or being repaired? Or, you know, we don't even know what's happening with that building, the roof is caved in.
In many cases, if it has asbestos, I'm trying to find a way to save the city money. Because if it's got asbestos in particular, then you have to have all this special demolition and efforts. It's always been the hope of the Historical Society that the building could be repurposed. And because it's a solid concrete block building that really is still in great shape, except for the, I mean, the roof and the doors. But the windows are still in good shape and so is the building. So it could become something else, or it could be torn down and something else could be built there. But in order to find out if there's asbestos and lead paint and deal with that, the only funding around is this funding. It's, and City of Tallahassee is actually the regional coordinator for the use of these funds. So.
Well, let's direct Mr. Hartman to let us know what it might cost to transfer titles, what you're talking about.
Just, yes.
And then to transfer title back again.
And I believe it was the town of Century, which is over in the Panhandle, that did this before. And we've been, the regional office keeps calling me in Atlanta and saying, "Don't you guys want to use some of this money?" So, you know, we would love to use other people's money to do things that we might want to get done. And then the second thing on here that I'm going to bring your attention is that we did receive notice, the city did receive the $50,000 grant that we'd applied for for stage three of renovation to Old City Hall. And the work for that should start in October at the beginning of the state's fiscal year. And, but it is also the time to apply for stage four of the renovate. It all happens at the same times. So we have a grant mostly finished to begin the renovation for upstairs at the building. But we would like to request a resolution of support from the city commission. We've received those at all of our other ones.
So we can, once again, direct Mr. Hartman, or we may have a copy of the resolution. And we'll have that on next month's agenda.
Right, thank you. And just to remind you all, I know there's a resolution about cleanup Caravelle. Saturday morning down at Pavilion at 8:30. 8:30 to noon, we'll be doing a riverfront cleanup. And we'd appreciate anybody coming to help us. We have lots of things that need to get cleaned up. Thank you very much.
Thank you for reminding us of that. It's on my calendar, but I forgot about it. Thank you, thank you very much. So that's 8:30 riverfront cleanup on Saturday at the Pavilion we have there. All right. Okay, so next staff report is the Caravelle Aviation Advisory Board.
Good evening. Monday, we had a meeting and Gulf Unmanned Systems Center made a presentation to use the airport for testing an autonomous mower. This, their testing of the mower wouldn't, it's to cut grass on highways and airports. But as far as our airport is concerned, it wouldn't be cutting the grass at our airport other than for that test area. So it's, their purpose is to test the mower, not to cut our grass. The, under federal law, the airport operators, that when you receive an airport from the federal government like Caravelle did, and then when you receive money on a JPA, you agree to follow all the FAA guidelines. And the law says that the airport properties are aviation-related purposes only. Now, there are exceptions, and the FAA will give exceptions to that. But they also say that they, when they do their airport, annual airport inspections, that they pay special attention to those non-aeronautical purposes that you use in the airport. And none of these, any use of the airport that, for non-aeronautical purposes, cannot interfere with the air traffic in any way, taxiing, runways or the ramp area. The other thing is, the FAA also says now you're going to have more people coming and going out of the airport that are unfamiliar with airport operations. So there's a security concern and airport access concern. We looked at it and thought about, we talked about, you know, the benefit it has to the airport. And it really doesn't have a benefit to the airport. They would have to pay commercial rates to use the property. And that's part of the FAA regulations. But it can be done. If it's something that would benefit the city or the county, we could, we can put enough criteria in there so that we could have a safe operation and they could have their testing area. But at the end, you can see I put down some of the caveats that would have to be covered as FAA approval, FDOT approval, the land lease at a fair market value, safety management system. And Mr. McCormick said that the GUSC is ISO 9001 certified. So they don't understand how to set up a safety management system. And then make sure that, and then part of that would be the training, the personnel for the non-EV, just for airport operations, and then the liability insurance.
D F O T and FFA are already working these projects temporarily. They're looking at other airports to do the same problem. So I would expect that the legal aspect of all that would be covered under that, wouldn't it?
He said that it was, it had been done at the Daytona International Airport with Embry-Riddle. So we would look at their criteria and what went on there and to see. And we talked about that with Mr. McCormick, is that, you know, we'd get their input as to how they operate and theirs.
So they already know how to do all that, is what I'm saying.
For that particular airport, yeah. Yeah, now that's a controlled airport. It's a whole different kind of airport. But yes, they've set up the safety programs in order to allow that. But they have a lot more assets too. I mean, this is a different, they have a controlled airport with a lot of radio-controlled vehicles. And, you know, it's an international airport. There's a lot of activity there. We don't have that kind of manpower or vehicles or communication systems that they have.
But it could be less of a problem for us than it would be for them.
It would be less of the problem for the airport, maybe not the pilots coming and going out of there. That's the whole thing. But again, I say, you know, if you have a safety management system, all that is addressed. All the risk factors are addressed and each risk factor is mitigated.
And I understand they'd be doing it at night.
They'd be doing it at night, which, you know, is.
Which is not a high-traffic time.
It's not a high-traffic time. But then again, you know, there's other safety concerns about that, lighting and things like that. But all of that, like I say, can be addressed. All the, when you go through a safety management system process, you identify every risk possible and you address that risk. And you come up with a mitigation to lessen it.
And I understand what you're saying, that the safety needs to be the first consideration.
Yes.
I mean, we can just look at the Amtrak, you know, highly professional organization. They just hit that backhoe. And they, you know, have a 20-step safety checks, multiple safety checks, a 20-step protocol before they put any equipment on the track in there, you know, that happens. And if we don't make sure that we have an abundance of caution before any type of this goes on, it's going to prove, make Caravelle look careless. You know, we just cannot, you know, let something like that happen.
Right. And that has to be almost like triple redundancy. Because situations like that, where they have everything in place, it always comes down to somebody who didn't follow the, do what they were supposed to be doing. So it's usually training or just not doing what they're supposed to be doing.
And so what he wants to do then is mow, he wants to conduct mowing.
He wants to test the mowers. So he would take, like initially on the west end of the approach end of 23, 23, there's a big open area there. He would take a section of that and they would program the lawnmower so that it would stay within a box, so it would cut the grass in that box. And then they would move it closer to the runway with its obstacles. And as the need progressed, or as it passed its test initially, then they would move it forward.
And so this would be intended for GUSC to bring clients onto the airport to use the airport as a marketing tool?
No, it would be strictly GUSC in, along with Embry-Riddle. They'd have some interns from Embry-Riddle. They would bring all their equipment in to do their testing. And then when they were done that, with that test, they would then remove everything from the airport.
Did he say when he needs to start this project?
He said May 3rd is what he was looking at. May 3rd to October.
Okay, May 3rd to October.
Right.
And also, DOT's ultimate purpose in this is to be able to test these equipments so that they can hopefully use them on highways and the roadways of our state.
Right.
And they have to test them somewhere so there's not really a better place than an open deal with less traffic here. And that's why our airport would be, I think, an ideal place for that. But we don't have high level of traffic and population out there.
I mean, it's a good place for him to do it. But again, and all I'm saying is that that's not the purpose of an airport. You know, it's not a test site. But if, but if, it can be done. If, as long as the airport is in its day-to-day operation and the air traffic is not interfering.
Well, see, that would, with the other, the other airports, it's not an airport use either. But it's already working out for the other airports to make this accommodation.
Well, I think it's been done at Daytona. I haven't talked to Daytona, so.
I have, and that's what I'd like to go ahead and report. Because Mr. McCormick contacted, he wrote to me, and I just want to thank you for all the work y'all have done, real quick here. And I mean, this is impressive, everything that y'all have done here in two months. Thank you so much. And the, Mr. McCormick contacted me on February 12th. And he said he had been contracted, he said Gulf Unmanned Systems Center had been contracted by the Florida Department of Transportation to help in evaluating an unmanned lawnmower for use on Florida roadways. Well, through the, I chaired the Cracken County Traffic Safety Team, and I brought that to the safety team. And they checked, I don't have it in writing, but they came back and reported in the next month. They checked with Mr. John Howell, who oversees this entire district of roadway maintenance, and then Central District and then District Three. And there's no one in those two districts that know anything yet about any roadway testing with FDOT. And none of those folks are aware of any contract that Gulf Unmanned Systems has with the FDOT. And so then, there you go. I'm going to pass that down to the clerk. Then meanwhile, with the knowledge of the city administrator, city attorney, I went ahead and wrote. ahead and wrote Mr. McCormick after I found that out, and I asked him, you know, could you please produce a hard copy of any of these contracts that you say that you have? And that was on February 15th, and I still haven't seen any kind of a hard copy from, of any contracts. So when he sent that original email, he sent what, oh, by the way, I did, I got to thinking, well, he said he had a contract with the motor roadways, and in the scope of work that he sent talked about Franklin County. So I went ahead and contacted Franklin County Administrator and two of them over there, and they don't know anything about any contracts with the GUSC in Franklin County. They, Franklin County hasn't contracted with GUSC either. So that, when he sent his original, saying that he had a contract, I, he sent along this, I'm thinking it's something like a scope of work, and I'm going to turn this on into the, and you probably seen that scope of work, and the very first sentence says the Florida Department of Transportation, Emory Riddle University, Gulf Unmanned Systems Center currently conducting a study into sensing requirements for autonomous vehicles, and it, you know, goes in there and talks, you know, what, you know, what it would take. And he said the system will undergo a series of roadside mowing trials in Franklin County through the subcontractor Gulf Unmanned Systems Center. So, but this is, this is a scope of work, and I, I got to thinking about it, and I just went ahead and got in line and looked at Emory Riddle, at their website, this is just a page from their website, and they actually, on their research page, and they actually had, for information on research partners and opportunities at Emory Riddle, called Dr. Michael Hickey, and he's the dean of research. So I didn't call him, but I wrote to him, and I asked him, you know, does, do they, do they have a contract with Gulf Unmanned Systems Center? And that, you know, his company is, Gulf Unmanned Systems Center is wanting access to Carabelle Thompson Field to test an unmanned lawnmower. And, you know, we just want to be sure this contract is, is real, because no one's produced a contract that I asked for, that I could review and research. And Mr. Hickey, or Dr. Hickey wrote back from Emory Riddle, and, and he also sent a copy of that to Charles Reinhold's. I have made some inquiries here, the results of which I will pass along. We have been working with GUSC, and we have a statement of work with them that has been agreed upon in principle for them to conduct mowing operations once funding is in place. However, at the moment, there is no signed contract for them to deliver anything to Emory Riddle, primarily because we cannot set up the subcontract until we receive funding from FDOT to do the work. We firmly believe this will happen in time, but it's not ready yet, and probably a matter of months away. So all of, everything, the work, the research that you've done, I feel like is, is good in setting up, you know, a basis of guidelines that, that need to, that need to be applied for the airport, and when, you know, I don't, I don't think that GUSC needs access on May the 3rd according to this information from, from Mr. Hickey. And I would, I would, I pass that down to the clerk, please. I would strongly advise that we wait till we see a contract, or he, he asks me to, you know, write back anytime, don't hesitate, and, and, and I will, you know, when the time comes, I'll, I'll, I will continue to follow up on it.
This'll, this is going to be a lot of work, background work that they'll have to do to get the FAA approval of FDOT.
And I don't know, you know, I didn't go into detail and ask them, have they started, and this was the Daytona location, have they started research in Daytona, Daytona Airport yet? I didn't ask that. But the scope of works, it, it names all of these different tasks, and the very first thing is to look into sensing requirements. And then the next thing is to upgrade the hardware and software, and then build the, make the changes to this Kavota lawnmower, and then develop an obstacle-avoided system, which they were going to do at, at Emory, Emory Riddle, and controlled testing, and there's actually a timeline in here, the name in this scope of work, or statement of work that Dr. Hickey referred to, and it talks about all these different months, and the mowing trials are like nine months into the project, so, you know, we've got some time to, to make plans and do the research.
Well, I, I don't see us, the need, the need to spend any more time on this until it comes to, closer, closer in, unless, you know, one...
I agree with you. I think we need to proceed to looking at it, continue to evaluate it, be sure, because, you know, a lot of this is pre-planning, and, you know, you're not committed on the contract until you know that you've got, you know, that it's going to move along. If you, for example, say, well, it's not going to move along, then there's no point in doing the planning.
But the planning's having, going to have to be done by GUSC. You know, we're just following the FDOT and FAA. We, we're having an airport inspection coming up on the 18th. I'll talk to the airport inspector at that time, he's the department head, so he'll have a good idea of, like, you know, using the airport for the non-aeronautical purposes, and how they feel about it and all, and give us some guidance from there.
I would say GUSC is, I just took some chicken scratch notes, if, if they can meet all the guidelines, and if they're willing to lease the space at the market value, and if they're willing to incur all the cost of developing a safety management system, and, and working with the board and the attorney on that, but, you know, we've spent so much precious time on GUSC, and meetings, and going to meetings, and, and city resources on GUSC. We just developed a lease agreement, spent three different meetings, the attorney back and forth, did four drafts on a lease agreement for five acres, which they never returned to follow up on, that's never, you know, so I just, you know, I want to make sure that they're not yanking our chain. I mean, I, I don't normally talk like that, but, you know, we, that's why I want to see a contract. We, we just cannot afford to expend, you know, countless hours on this, countless attorney hours, when we don't know if it's real or not. So...
What we need to do then is go ahead and get a contract, get paperwork going, get it going.
Yep, they, they, you know, they need to get the, the contract, and...
They have to get the contract with the Emory Riddle, and Emory Riddle has not got a contract with FDOT.
And then we just follow these, these requirements, you know, the FAA requirements, but it's, like I said, it's been done before, it can be done again, and it's just making sure that all the, all the procedures are in great place.
Do you see a problem with that, Mr. Hartman? I mean, that is the way that, you know, I've, I've read it here, that I've talked to this, or communicated with the Dr. Hickey, that Emory Riddle is trying to get funding from FDOT to conduct, conduct this research. They have not even, as far as I can tell, I don't know, but I don't believe that they've even started the research until they get the funding from FDOT. And then they have to sign a contract with GUSC.
And we talked about this earlier, if GUSC were to come before the city, and, kind of my understanding of it, it's, it's almost the same, if GUSC comes before the city and says, hey, we need your commitment on whatever terms, as part of an application to DOT to receive this money, then you all will decide whether the city wants to participate in that or not at that point in time, because we are running into the chicken and the egg thing here, that's all, but that's fine. I'm certain they, they come before the city on 90 cases.
So when he gets his contract, or when he's ready, then, you know, we'll see about signing a contract or lease for him to have access to the airport, I would think. Would that be correct, if he doesn't need access to the airport?
Yeah, I mean, he needs to commit, and the only thing that, and he would be the one to tell us this, is he says, hey, as part of our application, we must indicate that the city is or is not willing to give us access to that airport, and the city says, we would under these circumstances. And then if that's the case, then, then it moves it, and we'll do that or not, depending on whether the city decides that's an activity that is appropriate to be offered.
Well, you have this paragraph here, that you would not be opposed to the use of the airport for the stated purpose and recommend approval by the City Commission, if these requirements are met, and that's what we more we discuss, is FAA approval, FDOT approval, the land is leased at fair market value, you mentioned that, and approved safety management system, which you mentioned, which is also in the document here, of, you know, the redundant safety features, proper personnel training for non-aviators for operations, yes, trained officer, proper liability insurance, and under those conditions, then you would not be opposed to it. That's what you're saying.
That's right.
That's what the advisory board is saying.
Yes.
Okay.
So he does, but he doesn't have a lawnmower yet, so I don't know if he's going to be getting a lot more...
Well, I would say that the lawnmower would be very important to complete the project.
I know it. So, I see you moved forward, then, thank you so much.
Okay, one other thing, you got my notes for the reports, the one thing that I put down there was that the rotating beacon, we didn't, we didn't do that today, we ran into a scheduling problem, so that, I'm going to try again tomorrow to do that at the Friday. Any questions about that?
Thank you, sir.
And EDC, you had a meeting, and you had a report, I'm so accustomed to you not having a report, but we're glad you're here.
The, the discussion about the contract, for business, having certainty is important, particularly dealing with contracts and so forth. It sounds like it would be better to steer Mr. McCormick to a open field, unless there's a requirement that it has to be done in an airport. I mean, you've got spray fields, you've got sand burn fields, because he's going to have to pick up equipment, move it, so how far it moves shouldn't be...
Right, and you have an open field, right there in front of you, so...
And it's, and it's available.
Yes.
But you're probably going to need a little, you're probably going to need a little bit bigger piece to do that with, but, but, you know, we're in the starting phases, it would be nice to tell him that, make sure you have a place so you can get the contract, as they test it and they deal with the other sensors, maybe by then, you can seek that, but it sounds like a lot of effort for going someplace where they don't have to do it there, if you get my point, and I'll talk to him. Anyway, but the EDC meeting, we discussed minor things, there's nothing greats going on here, but the chamber's looking into a plan to support cyclists that come through, we've had two that have come through that ask work and they can't work, and they, so they're going to try to put something in place so we can accommodate those people, as we advertise on the website, more people say, oh, we can go to Carabelle. The, I was also informed that, from Linda Callen, that the rentals are up, the housing rentals, they're up like 54%. And I keep going back to my mantra of as supply diminishes and demand increases, that prices are going to rise for housing and people, we still need to somehow, it's not your job, is somehow get some type of more affordable housing in a quantity to support city workers and anybody else that, because jobs aren't increasing, pay, salary at 54%, but, but housing is rising. The, I was told also that we had a fresh produce shop that opened up yesterday across from Tim Street, didn't know that. And I also talked with Courtney about trying to, to get a map of the industrial park, if we're only leasing five acres to GUSC, even if they got the other five acres of wetlands, that means it's another 12 acres out there that we really haven't paid any attention to, so maybe we could promote that. There was one lead that we had, someone wanted to do manufacturing, but we didn't have any space available they could come to, to work, and that hadn't gone any further. You know, I did attend an opportunity for a strategic planning meeting, they had done a previous meeting identifying the strengths, weaknesses, and then they came back together discussing options, and I spoke frankly and told them that we really just don't have the means that other people do for doing, but we'd like to have some little small piece of something to do when they come here. Any questions?
No, but thank you, and thank you for following up with that one, one person, and, you know, we're, we're trying, we're trying here. Okay. The city attorney, is there, do you have a report?
I do not.
Okay. City administrator?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Keisha, the city clerk?
Yeah, just wanted to report to y'all, January 2015, they, they have a new law that all elected officials attend four hours of training, two hours on ethics law, one hour on open meetings, and one hour of open records. You have to have it done by the end, by December 2016. We can schedule a workshop to come here, and you can sit through it, or they offer, on the links page, they do have links that you can watch webinars, and you would just need to make a, a record and turn it in to me that you've, you've taken it and received this.
All right, thank you very much. The public hearing, and I see that Mr. Fred Fox is less, and Mr. Large as well. We're going to postpone this public hearing, is that what we're, we need to do? We need to, we need to re-advertise all of that wrong with the ad, and I'll run Thursday to 7, and have a special meeting the 21st at 3 o'clock. Okay, and you all make a special meeting for this public hearing and these resolutions here for the CDBG at 3 o'clock? Can you do that? Okay, do we need a motion for that?
No.
3 o'clock on the 21st. Do we need a motion, Mr. Hartman?
We do.
Okay, so may I have a motion to have a special meeting regarding this public hearing on the CDBG grant application program?
I'll move to have a special meeting.
Okay, special meeting, and Mr. Commissioner Allen has a motion for that, and Commissioner Walden second. All, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye, any votes? Okay, so the motion carries for the 21st at 3 o'clock. Then we have a proclamation, cleanup Carabelle Month, keep Carabelle beautiful, and would you like to read that for us?
Be happy to. It's a City of Carabelle Proclamation 01-2016, whereas the City of Carabelle is the heart of the City of Carabelle, whereas April 9th is Carabelle River Cleanup Day, whereas April 20, 22nd and 23rd is Carabelle Riverfront Festival, whereas the entire City of Carabelle is in the watershed of the Carabelle River, whereas keeping the watershed clean protects our drinking water, improves the waters we work in, and helps the water we play in, whereas a clean community adds to the quality of life. Therefore, we, the City Commission of Carabelle, can hereby proclaim April as Cleanup Carabelle Month, vermin sign this day, Thursday, April 7, 2016, by the action of Carabelle City Commission.
Okay, thank you. May I have the motion to entertain, to proclaim Carabelle as April, April as Cleanup Carabelle Month?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Allen, and may I have second, okay, and second by Commissioner Walden. Walden, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And there's no votes, so the motion carries. Thank you. All right, then we'll move on to old business, discussion and possible action regarding the noise ordinance. Oh, thank you. Noise ordinance. We discussed before, there's no easy solution, everyone won't be happy, but at this point, you know, I, I would like to put the ball on Commissioner Allen's court. Commissioner Allen requested discussion and possible action regarding the noise ordinance back in February this year, our February meeting, and I just want, you know, I want to understand, what are your objectives, and, you know, what would you like to see out of this?
The, the main thing that brought it up to my attention was something in the neighborhood that felt like that even early hours of the night, the noise was too loud, and I just said I would look into it, and so I brought it up. That's the only thing, that's the only thing, I have no feeling one way or the other about it. I do think that we need to know what we have and what's, what the rules are, so that we can comply with it. It could solve the problem in time, but it may not solve the problem, and then we're back where we started. Just some of the people in the community were opposed to, to the noise. We noticed, too, that you had some things on the side that seemed to bump a little bit over there. over there. Is it your signs that you put outside?
Yeah.
Yeah. But, uh, that, that's basically all, the reason I brought it up.
Well, we, we do have a current city ordinance that's, that's, that just has not been enforced because we didn't have a decibel meter. Now, we do have a decibel meter. Um, the ordinance, it was pretty much an exact copy of after, that was presented with, you know, from Appalachia Cola. Um, the sound levels on Appalachian, and the city ordinance are the same, the locations, uh, methods of measurement, times of day, uh, whether it's resident, commercial, or industrial, the decibels that are allowed. But I, I'm not real sure if, if this ordinance from Appalachia Cola, if it's not a residential style ordinance, because they're, they don't have a lot of residents in their, in their commercial district like, like we do. Have y'all had, uh, taken the opportunity to, to review these two ordinances and to compare them?
I have.
Okay, very good. It is very complicated.
I don't, I don't, I talked to the chief before the meeting tonight, and we, would you come up, Gary, and let's give your opinion on how you're gonna force it, can't be able to force it?
That's okay.
Yeah.
But we have to come up with, uh, an ordinance.
But it has to be a, a workable ordinance.
The ordinance, uh, city had to begin with a little bit complicated.
It is complicated.
And I think that, I mean, if, if the reasons don't come out right, then it says you gotta take a few more reading of, and a, what, sixty seconds? You have to take ten of them, and you have to have the meter in certain location, four feet off the ground, and it's just, and we can make it as complicated as one or simple as one. Speaking of Appalachia Cola, they just take one of these meters like we have, and they stand out, whether if we make the rule saying that it comes from the property line where the complaint's at, or where the noise is generated at, we gotta come up with that, determine how we gonna have it.
We do, we need to determine the sound levels, the locations, the methods of measurement, the, the times of day, uh, and, and, you know, we need really to probably develop an ordinance that fits the needs of Caravelle, and also something that the police department can work with.
Yeah, but they gonna be the ones enforcing that.
I know it.
Yeah, I mean.
So, uh, you know, it, we just, we just, we know there's gonna have to be compromise.
Well, me and the mayor spoke too, earlier before we did, and we talked about maybe having a workshop on this thing, and discussing somebody that should...
Have the, the owner, have the business, I mean, the people on the other side of the business, for the motels, people that live in the area, we all get together and simply can work something out.
And we don't wanna put any business out of business.
No.
We don't want another empty building on Highway ninety-eight that's, that's blighted, like the building down at, at Marine Street, at the end of Marine Street. We don't, we want your people to be, you know, to be able to rest at night, and we want the residents to be able to, to, to rest at night as well. But we don't wanna put anyone out of business, no way, no how. We, the city cannot afford that. We, we, and, we enjoy music. I know, I, I've been to both places here that are represented, I enjoy listening to the music and the entertainment. I just hope that there's some way, honestly, that we can come to a compromise.
And like I said the other day, that nuisance is a subjective term. What's a nuisance to one person is joyful sounds to somebody else, you know? Twanging guitars is not my cup of tea, but a good Cajun fiddle is, you know, that, that turned me on. So, you know, that, that's all a matter of opinion. And so, uh, so we gotta do it in a scientific way, and the only way to do that is a decibel meter, we gotta set a standard, and if it works...
And where we gonna take these readings at?
Uh, yeah.
I'm starting to get a little confused, man, you're talking about it.
Yeah, where you take the readings, and do, if you take the readings that the, or origin of the complaint, but then say they're out on Avenue H and they complain, and Chief Honey says, well, they're not over the decibel amount, they may come down to the ice machine and come fall in and complain again and say, but it's too loud. Uh, and I also feel like that we need to, do we need to have an example of how loud these decibels are, how loud they are not? Uh, we downloaded an app on our phone, and my husband got our radio, got it up to a certain decibel amount, and went outside, and I stayed right by the window inside, and I could not hear. He went out to our property line closest to the window, and I could not hear, hear that radio inside, but it just, you know, we need, we need to come up with...
It depends on which way the wind's blowing. If you're downwind, you're gonna hear it more loud than, than otherwise. So, there's so many, you know, different issues involved in that. That's why it's a little complicated, and I don't know.
I think there's something we need to look into more, and come up something. Taking, uh, ordinance from another town, you know, I don't think that's the answer to it. Appalachia's a different town than us.
It is, they don't count...
We need to talk about create an ordinance that fits us.
That lady's shoes may not fit us.
Well, and I, do they have outside venues? I don't know.
Well, there's part in there where we're talking about, um, exceptions, and a business that operates, you know, and has music, and, you know, restaurants or bars, whatever, as long as it's under a roof with closed doors and closed windows.
And that's in the Appalachia ordinance. And we have several open venues, or possibilities for open venues here in the city.
Could we ask Eric, if he has a comment on this?
If you would like to comment.
Um, my only comment was, when you do come up with it, is where you take the reading from. Uh, sound pressure, if it's sixty decibels, and you measure it, like right now, we're measuring it approximately from me to Courtney, ten or fifteen feet from the stage. If you're ten feet away from the noise, every time you double that distance, you'll lose six decibels in sound pressure. So really, by the time you go into the middle of Mr. Butler's field, that sound pressure is actually, the ambient noise is louder than that sound pressure at that point in time, if you're going from a decibel reading.
We took, uh, I took a sample one night from your place, and it was around sixty.
Yeah.
The same song, everything playing, I go to the parking lot of the fire department, it's like forty-three.
Right, we're not, we're not in a residential area, so I would just think if, if we are being a nuisance in a residential area, then you have to go there and check and see how loud that nuisance is, because if it's sixty decibels, that means that they should not be hearing sixty decibels at their house, not standing on the side of the building. You know?
Well, I, I, I think that one of the problems is, is it's mixed use, and we have, you know, a lot of residents in the commercial area, and the Appalachia Cola, they're not, they don't have as many residents in that commercial area.
Well, I've been going all up and down the road, um, and get readings from everywhere, and I've been across the street, the loudest is at Skip's. That's just where it reflects, over, over there.
Okay.
And we've put some, we've put some, some things up to try to, to see, and I've been doing sound, instead of letting the bands do their own sound, I've been doing sound where I could control the bass frequencies better. Um, but to me, right now, we have not been offensive, or I haven't heard anybody say that we have been. The police have been there every night, that we have music pretty much for the last three weeks. And I've not really had a, you know, like, that's really loud, and I don't know if Skip this, you know, what he's hearing over there, he hasn't had any complaints lately.
It has improved since his sound panel's been...
Right.
Has anybody else, did y'all know of, y'all had any complaints? Anybody else?
For this gentleman here, always business, what times do your bands stop playing at nine?
Uh, they're usually stopping around the midnight.
Midnight?
Yeah. And we've always stopped, we've always stopped usually an hour or two before we have to. You know, since we've been open, we've been open for five years.
And, and that's one of the things we may address, you know, the, this Appalachia is at ten o'clock at night, and that makes, makes, leads me to think it's more of an ordinance for residential area. Uh, you know, if you're, if you have a business, you know, on Friday evenings at ten o'clock, it's, it's a little early.
It's just starting.
Yeah.
And that's the problem.
Especially summertime.
But then, then that, but then there's the problem where you have mixed use, you know, residential and, and commercial, and it's, it's very difficult.
Well, the problem on the highway too is, like my truck, just driving past the restaurant, is twenty or twenty-five decibels over what you're supposed to be in a residential area. It's, I mean, it's a straight factory truck, you know, just your straight diesel Ford pickup or Dodge pickup is about eighty decibels when he drives past. You know, a car may be sixty, you know, this room is probably fifty right now, even if it's...
I take it it wanna go around fifty.
Yeah, I mean, that's, so you're talking about ten decibels louder than this, then every time you multiply that distance, you lose six decibels. So the closest residence to us is probably Gulf on Man. They're probably the closest. Skip maybe second. Uh, I don't think Bo lives at his business anymore, right?
I still own it.
Well, no, you own it, but you don't live there though.
No, I come and go in there next month.
And he did, and he did get a special exception, uh, when you, when you came there, purchased that to use at the top, so that you came in and got a special exception.
All right, yeah, that one hits you, I'm just saying that's my closest.
Yeah.
Um, and have you checked the sound pressures of anything else? I know everybody's just checking.
They're checking us.
The building.
I could go anywhere else.
Have you gone and checked sound pressures? You know, I go to the fountain over by the ball field, and it's like forty-five, fifty, and that's on the road. For your, you know, have you gone to the water treatment plant?
No, we haven't.
And checked it there?
We haven't really had any complaints.
You're, you're, you're pretty much, you're pretty much over there, but if you're gonna do something that says, if somebody at the beach can call up and say that we're playing too loud of music that they can't hear at their house, then it's gonna pertain to everybody.
And you're gonna judge us at our doorstep based on somebody that might not even be able to hear it, but they're, you know...
I mean, you were talking about it one night when I was down there. I, I personally don't feel like it's fair to go there and stand ten feet, probably like ten feet from your door, or where the band's playing. I mean, we should have a little distance somewhere in the, and the ordinance won't do it.
And even then, it hasn't been that loud. You haven't had any really high readings?
No.
Come out of there.
So, this is probably, the main, the main items are to, uh, determine the location of, uh, measurement, whether they're gonna take the, and, and time, time of day. So, um, do we wanna have a workshop on this thing when the other commissioners are here?
I think we do, to take a more serious look at this. There are just several questions that, you know, we need more input.
So, we need to get our calendar out again. Sorry. In the daytime, please.
I was told if we did get it shut down, he wouldn't, he wouldn't vote for me, or this person wouldn't vote for me, so I said, well, I can't help that. I don't think he did either.
Well, you weren't out of ballot, goodness gracious. Nobody could vote for you. Just a dang shoe-in.
But, but, but I sort of let that go right, right over my head. But I just wanna find, you know, some compatible way that everybody can, as much as possible, and you're not gonna get everybody happy about it, there's no way.
That's true. But we might work it out. None of us want any businesses to go out, not sure.
Yeah, and I don't mind changing things and then seeing if it actually changes the sound. You know, we were gonna do something different, but I don't wanna do five things, you know, I like to build here if they thought that that helped or not, you know?
All right, we need to make, uh, keep in mind the Riverfront Festival, you know, the twenty-second, and of course, we wouldn't have a workshop on the twenty-third, so...
Probably have this before the public hearing.
Y'all gonna be here anyway.
Special, that'd be good, before the special.
I probably wouldn't be able to, to make that. We could go after.
Thank you, Gary.
I, it's, I know it.
I heard too little with pain, so it's, after hours is, is not...
Yeah, we can do it during the, like a, like a four time, three thirty, or four time.
And the public hearing would take, it's not gonna take about a half an hour, or fifteen minutes even.
Or just do it immediately following?
Okay, I'll stay as long as I can.
All right, so on the twenty-fourth first, we'll have a workshop immediately after the public hearing on, on the noise ordinance. Uh, may I have a motion for that?
I still have it.
Okay, and I guess the second, okay, from Commissioner Walden, uh, that's Allen and Walden. Any, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so the motion carries. All right, then the, uh, next item on the agenda is discussion and, uh, possible action regarding relocation of City Hall, and, um, we asked Courtney to, you know, talk to some folks, and I think we did.
We did get an estimate, and it's just a rough estimate. The demolition of this building would be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and that's not including tipping fees. We could get the county to waive the tipping fees, it'd be a hundred and thirty, but we'd have to pay additional tipping fees, so, you know, you're looking at two hundred thousand.
Any asbestos removal, anything like that would be... Yeah, I, I went ahead and I knew you were contacting Crowder Construction, um, and then I, I went ahead and called Cross, well, what I did, I, uh, the old Oaks Motel over at Blackham Bay was demolished, so I called the Cola Building Department, and they knew right off who did it, uh, Cross Environmental Services in Crystal City, and, uh, they specialize in recycling, and that helps to reduce the demo cost. And I talked to James Smith, he, he from Crystal City conducted a, a very preliminary survey using Google Earth, the property appraiser's site, and, and he called the landfill, Franklin County landfill, and he said that, uh, to conduct a demo like that on a, on a building like this, or like the Oaks, that you have to have an asbestos survey, it has to be done first. And, uh, he said in Florida, this is not uncommon, that the old school buildings are being removed, and that the, the school board, uh, may have an archive at asbestos survey, that Franklin County might accept the permitting. He said back in nineteen seventy-six, all schools were mandated by, uh, federal law to have an asbestos survey, and they had to keep that updated every three years with an operations and maintenance plan. So, we can maybe find out, I don't know if Mr. Hartman would do that, or if Ms. Courtney would, uh, the school board has an, uh, over asbestos survey that we can, we can use. Um, they must have something, they had to do it for, for quite, this building was building seventy-two, so, um, and then, uh, listen, he, he reported that the landfill tipping fees are very high, near forty-five dollars a ton, and, and that's, that's high compared to other areas in the state of Florida. Um, and he said that it, any, any of the clean concrete, I guess that would be like slab work, uh, that, that our landfill will take it for free, but anything that's dirty concrete, that would be like, or dirty, uh, debris, that's your roofing, partition walls, ceiling tile, that's your forty-five, forty-five dollars a ton. And, uh, so he gave a, a preliminary quote, you know, from looking at the, at the items, and, um, he, he, uh, talked about that materials like the floor tiles, which we have been concerned about in the past, they can, that can be removed during a regular wet, what he termed a wet demolition, and that's a demolition that's used for dust control. But if there's any, he calls it friable asbestos materials, and that would be like any piping or sealing textures, that would be considered environmental, and with your, that would be done, uh, uh, noticed in your asbestos survey. So he gave a quote, it's a little bit higher than the quote you, you mentioned, but it includes a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for tipping fees. He gave a quote of two seventy-five to three hundred, and he said tipping fees would be about a hundred and fifty, but this is a preliminary quote, he hasn't been here yet, and we don't know about how much asbestos. Um, uh, the, he got the amount of, of tonnage from the square footage and, uh, looking at the building. They can estimate the size of square footage... They can estimate the size of square footage, they know how many square feet of debris they can get each load, it'd be about three thousand, three hundred and fifty loads. He said as a rule over the state, tipping fees run fifteen to thirty dollars a ton, so we'll call those twenty-eight dollars a ton. So if we can't get it free, we might be able to negotiate, no matter who does it, you know, if it comes to that. So this is, we need to, we need to determine, you know, whether or not we're gonna go through with this, if we're gonna stay here in this, in this location, or buy a, a new, new location. We need, we know that we'll have some disruption of business, we're gonna have to have storage location for our records, we're gonna have to know where the commission is gonna meet, where the meetings will be held. We gotta find out to, you know, get an accurate cause for demolition, we've gotta determine, determine our funding options. So in all of that, will help us decide whether we're gonna stay or move, but no, Mr. Hartman reported last month, no matter what happens, the building would need to be demolished, we can't just go off and vacate. So I would like to ask Courtney to order a topographic survey, if possible, because we're in a flood zone here, so we need to know, we've got to go up, how high do we have to go up? If we put temporary modular units out there to run the city, day, city business, Courtney, she should mention that those would have to be elevated to base blood level, is that correct? Okay. And then, if possible, contact Sperry Buildings of Tallahassee, maybe they can come down and kind of give us an idea of what they do, metal buildings, and I got that idea from Camp Gordon Johnson, they're, they're using Sperry Buildings, and they're very happy with that. So, and, and metal buildings, is that, is that?
Yeah, sure.
So we, we might consider something like that, see if they can come down and see us within the next month, so we can report what their facade's look like on the front.
Got a question, if we decide to go with demolition, would we not have to get bids for, from?
Yes, you would have to get bids, but we're just trying to get an idea. And I think Crowder had intended on keeping a lot of the material, because he does bill landmark and stuff like that, so I don't.
At this, this company, that's what they do, they specialize in that.
Yeah, it would definitely have to, anything over twenty-five thousand dollars would have to be in.
So we would probably get three or four bids on a demo.
And Mr. Crowder's contract for debris removal, that only has to do with storm damage, doesn't it? Would you get us a good storm in here to take care of it? That took him right on the line to do it.
We still have to.
Hey, y'all got a storm?
So meanwhile, we need to consider, you know, what are the needs of this, of the staff, or the needs of the police department, including their evidence room, what's gonna be the square footage, you know, how many breakout needing rooms do we need, what the commission size needs to be, and we're gonna need a records room, one or two record rooms. So we've got a, a lot of things to think about, and one that we, you know, once we approve all of this, it still could take two years for it to, to happen, because there's a lot of permitting and planning that we'll have to go into, so that we can continue to operate on day-to-day basis. So I guess we'll just table this again?
And have our air commission.
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna, Ms. Kisha, we're gonna table this and, and report back on the topographic survey, and Sperry Buildings, and any other information, and stuff like, any of the other commissioners, please bring information, okay? So Allen, Commissioner Allen is motioning to table, and I have a second, please, sir. Okay, and that's Walden. And any more discussion? All in favor? Aye, okay.
And that's Sperry Buildings?
Yes, Sperry Buildings of Tallahassee. Okay, so the motion carries. All right, then, this item, under new business, item one, discussion of possible action regarding a consent agenda, section to the city commission's main agenda format, I requested this item, I was trying to talk with the attorney, or I did talk with him, and trying to figure out a way that we could streamline, and that's the meetings, and so that we could spend more time on the important items, like, like what we've just discussed, the last two items. And the consent agenda suggestion came up, and so this is where you would use this section of the agenda, and you would put routine matters, like the minutes that you vote on regular, and the attorney's invoices that you vote on regular, things that are not, not, non-controversial, and they don't usually require discussion or independent action. And, you know, we could just vote on it all in one motion and one vote. And I think it might help to streamline along with the fact that I've asked the staff, I don't know if Mr. Butler, but he can't give a report in advance, I've asked the staff to send the reports in advance, so that at least about a morning of the meeting, so we can review and be prepared. So would anyone care to discuss this, or are there any questions?
No, I have any questions, I understand your point.
Would anyone care to entertain a motion to adopt a consent agenda format to the main agenda?
I believe we should vote.
Okay, well, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'm second.
Okay, thank you. So motion by Commissioner Walden, and a second by Commissioner Allen, is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries, thank you. And then we have a request for, from Commissioner Cal Allen, item two, request for the city to donate no more than four hundred dollars to go for room and board to approve Governor Stone to be here during the Riverfront Festival, requested by Commissioner Cal Allen.
Okay, the background of this, it costs close to two thousand dollars for the Governor Stone to make the trip from Appalachia Cola to Appalachia, from Panama City to Appalachia Cola to here, and we tried to get Appalachia Cola to contribute some, and they probably will. Up until recently, the TDC have been funding, the city's been sponsoring the, for five hundred dollars in the, the trip here, but the TDC shifted gears this time because they wanted that money to be spent in advertising, so the Governor Stone has gotten the money for advertising, and so the city will not be getting the five hundred dollars that we normally would have gotten for, for, for support of the Governor Stone. So I'm, this would be an expense to the city, I don't know if we have a, a certain fund that we could, we have been paying for the room and board, for the, for the crew, and the captains in the river this year, so I would urge that we continue to do that if we can, very only do it.
Okay, and I will say, you know, I'm glad you brought up a point, and thank you for saying that it will be an expense to the city, whether it's four hundred, four thousand, or four hundred thousand, like we were just discussing, it's an expense, and, and I'm working hard to, I'm watching every dollar that goes out, pretty much, and staff is, is on board with that, and we're, we're doing a good job. I, I, you know, so we reviewed that part, but the, there is some money, I don't know, you know, where it should come from, how, how you know, it would be budgeted, but Camp Gordon Johnson, we budgeted eighteen hundred dollars for them in this budget year, and they requested fifteen hundred, so there was three left from that, so that could be, that could be reallocated, could that, Kisha? So then we would just need to eke out a hundred dollars from somewhere.
Okay. The Riverfront Festival will donate a hundred dollars for cost.
Okay.
Well, thank you, son.
All right, so then we listed the three hundred that, that Camp Gordon Johnson, didn't you?
Okay.
Okay, so then, maybe have a motion for that? I don't know who can motion, but.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Well, and, and this is a thing where I, I receive no benefit whatsoever, and it's not a conflict of interest, so Doc can make the motion, or I'll say the no.
Okay, well, Commissioner Walden.
He's our, I'll say the no.
Okay, okay. And is there any more discussion? Okay, so that's the motion for three hundred dollars for, from Commissioner Walden, second by Commissioner Allen, and is there any more discussion? And, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and the motion carries then. And so next thing, we want to approve the attorney's bills, and, and those were sent to us in advance, and we appreciate that, Mr. Hartman.
Of course.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Happy to do it.
And so, did everyone get a chance to review the attorney's? Okay, all right, very good then. May I have a motion then to approve the attorney's bills?
I'll take the first one, please.
Okay, all right.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Walden, and a second by Commissioner Allen, any more discussion? All right then, all in favor?
Aye.
And, all right, and the motion carries. Is there any more comment for the good and public? All right then, then we're adjourned. Thank you very much.